Yeah. I don't understand all this anyway.
You know, you know where she's at though.
Yeah, it's just. And then, of course, we're annexing, we're annexing everything up. Yeah, twenty years is approved. I can't wait, I can't wait for the feedback. That's, that's the card.
Yep.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Was the facade grant from the last meeting, was that put into the consent agenda?
No, I put it under my department reports.
Okay.
To explain what we talked about.
Right.
We'll just address that.
All right, good evening. I'd like to call the city council meeting of April first, two thousand and twenty five to order. We will please rise for the fledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, the consent agenda. Entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion on the consent agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're gonna move to item number five, public hearing, the Swanson hearing. We will recess the regular city council meeting at five thirty one P M. to conduct the public hearing and a variance request for a lot size and subdivision approval for the property located at six five one Broadway Avenue North. Comments were submitted ahead of time by Emily Christie and are included in the council packets. Council, have you had time to review?
I have.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Council, is there anything you wish to speak about on behalf of Emily Christie's comments?
I did speak with her, and I will admit I happen to live on Broadway North, and I agree with some of her points.
I would like to know what the intended purpose was, or is for the subdivision. Sorry, Deb, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Pardon?
I said I didn't mean to cut you off. I was just wondering what the intended purpose was for the subdivision.
I can answer that.
Okay.
They wish to be able to sell the properties as two separate residences.
Yeah, there's no changes really being made or anything other than, you know, subdividing back to its original.
Right. It was four parcels.
Yeah, yeah.
Converted to one parcel, being asked to bring it back to two parcels.
Correct, yep, yep, correct.
And it's already a rented property, just under one parcel ID number, looking to split it into two, again, likely to be able to sell it as two individual homesteads. Everything's been looked at, and everything's decoded. It is a house in all intents and purposes.
Yeah, I can comment. We did have the building official prior to them starting this process. They did conduct an inspection and confirm that it is compliant with all the building code, so it can stand as a legally single residence on its own.
Is there a rental license for that property?
I believe so, yeah. Well, no, it's family.
Family.
That's right, it's exempt. It's on our list, but it's family.
Okay. Good. Well, with that being said, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting at five thirty three P M. In the next, we would be looking to a motion adopting the resolution two thousand and twenty five dash oh seven, approving the variance for lot size and subdivision.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution two thousand and twenty five dash oh seven, approving variance for lot size and subdivision.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. We will be moving on to item number six. For purposes of my involvement as a commercial lender with the property Cot Smith Lumber, I will recuse myself from the public hearing and turn over to the acting mayor, Jeff Gondak.
We will recess the regular city council meeting at five thirty four to conduct a public hearing on a parking variance request for Cot Smith Lumber. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? I would, the planning commission did look at the items for this, and we don't have any issues. At this time, I will reconvene the regular city council meeting at five thirty five. Is there a motion adopting resolution two thousand and twenty five dash oh for approving the annexation?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I will now, I will now pass the gavel back to the mayor.
Nope, we'll have to continue with item twenty five oh eight and the development.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If I could, Mr. Acting Mayor, to, when you address resolution two thousand and twenty five oh eight on the parking variance and site plan, we also want to just add the contingency that all engineering comments are satisfied as well. We have a couple items that we're just working through that we should get confirmation on in a day or two, and we met on that this afternoon, so if you could just include that as well.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Okay, so we'll consider resolution two thousand and twenty five dash oh eight, approving parking variance and site plan. There was some contingencies on the site plan that we were waiting for also, but we don't have, it would be the very end site plan with the building site or the building on plan.
A number of those have been addressed in the plans in your packet, too. The notes have been made on the site plan. So like, snow storage is over here. I'm moving too fast for my computer. Snow storage is the, like, red kind of dots there, and then there's some additional there. The sign is located in that little rectangular. They did, we did put in the item in the development contingencies on the facade, so that's in there. They removed the trees, looks like, you know, we're just doing the screening on the fencing. So those items were updated. They did respond, so the only items we're waiting on are just a couple of the confirmation on the kelps for drainage.
Any comment? If not, entertain a motion for resolution two thousand and twenty five dash zero eight, approving parking variance and site plan.
Along with engineering, please.
Along with engineering recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll also looking to consider approval of development agreement.
And I will just add one item that was amended, and there's an updated copy on the table, too, back there. It was just adding a twenty year max on that permanent water and sewer connection, so we have that date located in the development agreement, so that's clear for everybody. The permanent utilities come available sooner, they can connect sooner, or if they need to, you know, based on the need of, you know, updating, we can do that, but as long as they can wait is twenty years. So they will still make that connection with that private line to our city sewer at this time, but then the permanent, when the full utilities come down that way, twenty years or less. And then all the other development conditions that were laid out as part of the planning and legal review are in there as well, and the developer has reviewed that agreement as well.
Any comment? I think it's, we're moving in the right direction, Nick. Thank you. Looking.
I need a motion, huh?
Looking for a motion to approve the development agreement.
Move to approve the development agreement?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I will give you back the gavel.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number seven, Angie Hill, with regards to the Foley Legion mud volleyball fundraising event that she'd like to do on May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five. Angie's at the podium. Angie, take a few minutes and explain to us what, what's going on.
I, some of you know, some of you know me, I have got volunteered and into doing the Central Minnesota Dancing with the Stars. And with that, it's a, pretty much, it's not much dancing and a lot of fundraising, thank God. And with that, I'm not one to do something normal. I like to do things unique, and I have helped run a mud volleyball tournament multiple times. I used to do it in Clearwater, as a fundraiser down there at one of the bars. And so I would like to do one again for this charity event. All the money raised goes to Anna Marie's Alliance. It has to go through the Central Minnesota Women's Fund, and then my charity then goes there. How it's done, you know, and I've talked with the Legion on it and got things going with them. We put poly down, it's four man teams to make the court a lot smaller, because if any of you have played in mud, you don't move as fast as you think you're going to. We put poly down, we put round, square bells in to hold the mud in, we make four man teams, and it's best to fifteen to kind of keep the game going fast. I've talked with the Legion, I have tents coming, I'll keep everything outside, because you don't want all that mud in a building. Because when people come out of it, they've offered to have the space and allow the tents to be out there to set up for that, to keep people outside. We'll have kind of some day up drawings, different things to help keep them in, and that kind of stuff, so. We, of course, then have to leave the mud there till it dries, to get it to be able to scoop back up, so they agree, you know, hey, that's fine, we can leave it there for a couple days, praying no rain, so it does dry out. And then we also bobcat it back into a trailer and get it out, so that is what I'm looking at doing.
So you, you addressed some of the comments or concerns, I think, around the containment of
Yeah.
the event and what that looks like and the cleanup, and obviously the concerns with it, you know, well, say, spilling into the streets or going down the sewer drains, which would be, which would be a problem. What exactly are we looking for from a council standpoint? I mean, is, is this being like a special event and a special event permit of sorts, or?
So the reason I brought it here is just because it's a different event than we've ever done, and we wanted to make sure that any concerns from Public Works or P D are addressed as well as the councils. And I guess I'll defer if they have any questions or comments, or maybe clarifications we need. Essentially, the operating the event and the Legion serving shouldn't be an issue. They have a non enclosed, as long as they stay on the premises. They can't be walking the streets with the.
And that's why we picked it's a lot.
Yep.
The court can be closest to the road, and then the tents and everything closest to the buildings, so then that way servers aren't trying to walk around the court. And it's easier for me to pick up and get the dirt out. When I've done it in the past, it's a lot easier when I can be right there and get it up and out.
And, yeah, so I guess I, I'll defer to the department heads have any questions, or just how some things are handled. We just want to make sure and we want the councils okay with this.
Biggest thing is just, mud's gotta stay on the property. Can't go in the alley, can't go on the sidewalk, don't storm sewers.
No, and that's, I mean, I don't want to go anywhere either, because then it takes away the fun, I mean, let's be real.
Nope, I don't see any trouble in that.
Is it gonna be fenced in the whole area to control, like, people just, like, kids and stuff going into it?
The Legion hadn't, we hadn't discussed that finally yet. I mean, I can skip that, that way, if you prefer.
Just thought of that. How many people do you usually draw in? I'm just thinking for parking purposes, because we have to make sure we keep the roadways open.
The last time I had about a hundred and fifty, but then you're gonna want a lot of people coming together, because they're teens, right? So, you know, and then the people just coming to watch, so.
And are you looking for any, like, extra law enforcement enforcement on the site or anything like that?
Not really, I mean, it's gonna be kind of a family thing at that point, and I'm raising money for domestic women's shelters, so I wouldn't anticipate it to be, you know.
Do you have an hours set?
Yeah, I was.
We're gonna start at one.
Okay.
And then hope to be done before dark, kind of thing.
Just something for the Legion of note, you are responsible to contain that alcohol. You know, your insurance is usually gonna want to see that, too, as well, so that's just a note, though.
I'll let them know that.
And I'll be getting event insurance for that, too, as well.
Is there any other additional permits or anything required on behalf of the city for something like that, being outdoors? I mean, as it is more so the, you know, through proxy, the Legion that's throwing in the event, just you're more or less putting it on.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just kind of the uniqueness of it. We haven't seen it before. We just thought it would be best so that everybody is aware of what's going on and what it's, what the reason for, and stuff like that.
Sure, and it, and it's an event, I mean, that spectators can come in and join?
Yeah.
It's not just for.
Well, I would hope that they wouldn't want to be joining in the mud. You have to pre-sign for that, but, you know, for volleyball team, but.
They can come and spectate and watch and everything else.
Yeah.
Partake. Did you figure out anything with food yet?
If I do a suggested donation, and I have the food donated, which I've almost got all of that taken care of, then I can get, avoid the Legion's license and or anybody else's license, because it's a suggested donation.
Okay.
Yeah, and we wouldn't regulate that to the state. They'd have to, you know.
Similar to like the fair food and stuff, right?
Yep, Department of Health would be.
Yep, and since it would be a suggested donation that they're, here, it's kind of a free will, you can donate if you would like, kind of thing, it takes away that.
I, I wonder, Katie, to your point, as far as fencing goes, and just, you know, isolating the event and, and making sure that it's, I'll say, contained, especially with beverages and things of that nature. If you didn't do some sort of, like, temporary.
Like a snow fence, kind of thing.
Like a temporary snow fencing just on the perimeter
Yeah.
of the, of the parking lot, so everyone knows to stay, you know, off the sidewalk and things of that nature.
Yeah.
So it's contained on the property. I think that would be advised.
Would that help?
And then, I think, just you control who comes in, who goes out.
Yeah.
Just to have the area taped off would be good enough, you know, so that.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, as long as you did something to, to give the appearance that, you know, anyone who's coming into the event
Right.
stay within, right, those borders.
Yeah.
I guess, you know, how you do it is, is up to you, but I think it, it would warrant, just for precaution and
Yeah.
you know, keeping people where they need to stay, so it doesn't turn into something different. Any other comments by council?
Yeah. Abe, what do these volleyball participants wear? Are they the typical beach volleyball swimsuits?
Oh, I mean, no, I mean, the tournaments I've held, it's just a T-shirt and shorts kind of thing, that you're gonna.
I have to admit, I find it offensive. I'm a woman, I have a daughter. I've seen mud events. And I'm, I just, you can't limit this to who's watching, what's their hearing, comments being made, I just.
I mean, from the ones I've done, and from when I first saw it, I actually saw it up in Aiken. And I'm like, wow, this looks like something I really want to get into, right? And then the first time I did it in Clearwater, you know, I found, you know, going and sitting and listening in the bar sometimes a lot more vulgar than being there. And really, you are so dirty, and when you think you're gonna move or not, you, there's not really things to see.
The people playing are not the people I worry about.
You know, it's, I mean, and I could, let's put it this way, Anna Marie's, as a domestic women's shelter, said, hey, Angie, I think that sounds like a really fun idea. And they would be somebody that would be extremely offended if it's not, and I'm actually on their board for their events. You know, I, my daughter can't wait to play, I, you know, that kind of stuff, because it's just the fun of having fun. Who doesn't a kid want to play in the mud? I mean, and really, that's the mentality that I'm putting into this, and to think outside of that, I guess that's just not where our mind is.
Unfortunately, yours isn't the only mind running around the streets of Foley, or Princeton, or wherever.
Well, I would say going to the Benetton Fair, there was a lot worse, more appropriate outfits there. I mean, I just think it's not gonna be offensive, and it's meant for a really good time.
There we go, council.
I think it's a good idea, fun. Hope you guys make some money.
Yeah.
I do, too.
I think it's a good class.
Good.
Just want to go through, and I think we.
Motion to approve. We would, we would entertain a motion then for the Foley Legion Mud Volleyball Fundraising Event for May seventeenth.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you, Angie.
Thank you.
See, item eight here, we're gonna have a wastewater regionalization project update by Jared Vogi from Bolton and Mink. Good evening, Jared.
Good evening, Mayor Council. No pay estimates tonight, just a simple update on the wastewater project. So we continue to collaborate with the city of St. Cloud and identify plans for, for discharging water into their system through weekly meetings and daily interactions with, as work is being completed out there. So contractor is working on some punch list items, and based on discussions that we've had with them now that it's April, and the weather's more conducive, they're gonna be tackling a bunch of the punch list items that are left out there. Wastewater ponds are ice-free, so we continue to do sampling on the water quality in there to make sure that it's adequate for discharge. So that's kind of a, a short summary of what's going on with the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
About odor control, the odor control?
In terms of the, the building itself, or the overall?
Overall.
Yeah, so that's the, that's actually why the sampling is being completed of the ponds, to make sure that the sulfide and sulfate levels are at a level that can be treated by the chemicals that we're using to control odor, both as part of the, the design system and at the discharge when it starts up again, so.
And St. Cloud is happy?
Yeah, I mean, we're collaborating with them daily, and they'll ultimately approve the plans before that happens, so.
Counsel?
So, in the future, we'll probably have to look at this before we start pumping in the winter again, as to maybe more treatment than normal.
So, yeah, so what you're referring to is the chemical dosing associated with the odor control building, and that will all be resolved before, well before next winter, so. Yep.
Guaranteed?
Guaranteed.
I'm good.
All right, well, thank you, Jared, for the update.
Thanks, council.
Item number nine on the agenda, two thousand and twenty five north side improvements, the bid opening and award. Overview of bid tabulation, Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you stated, we had our bid opening, March twentieth, for our two thousand and five north side street improvement project. Six total bidders ranging from, I believe, call it four point eight nine million to six point three four, sorry, six point three nine million. Our, our interest rate was third and not least aside as far as that order goes, so two, two are below us and four above us. Keekly Underground was the, was the low bid for this project at four million, eight hundred and ninety-five thousand, thirty dollars and eighty-seven cents. So with that, we recommend that we move forward with, we're in the parts of Keekly Underground, unless you have any questions for me at this time. Oh, yeah, this morning, the county had their board meeting, and this project was approved by the county to report, and I'm warning the project to keep that around.
And due diligence was done on all the items and materials needed for the project and?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, does that include the, the change that was made for the, the bridge connection, or where we're not doing the bridge anymore?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, yep.
What was our original estimates when we, when we first presented this to the public?
The, the, in the feasibility study, the original estimate was around that, that four point nine million. That was prior to us adding the thirteenth. And so with us adding that thirteenth, our initial estimate for this position were at like around five point two was roughly what we talked about at that time. Total project cost is.
Okay. And this includes the thirteenth as well?
Correct, yep.
Happy to see the number lower than, than expected.
And hopefully we don't have any changes.
All right, consider approval of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, award bid for twenty twenty-five Northside Improvements to Keighley Underground. I would make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. We will move into Mayor's comments and open forum. Sarah, do we have anyone that's signed up? Okay.
Yep, you need to sign up. That's up to the mayor.
Yep, go ahead, that's fine.
Sarah, she wants to sign up.
Great, so I'll have you enter the podium and state your first and last name for us and your address and, and take a few minutes and.
My name is Rosalie Masacchio. I live at one fifty Cottage Grove in Flinttown in Foley. I just want to make a comment about the eighty-eight trees that were taken down in Foley in the last couple of weeks. I read in the paper belatedly that the magic number was eighty-eight trees down, forty-four trees to be planted. I don't know where the number came from, but I believe that for years, the recommendation is if you take down a mature tree, you plant three small trees for every one you take down. And I would just like to comment that, I don't know where the number came from, but Foley is losing its trees like crazy. We used to be a tree city, we got no trees. I think Dewey Street, when that was done, there were supposed to be trees. I think there's like one every block. I don't know how many they took down, but I think that the city needs to look at planting three trees for every tree they took down. Because I think the, the city looks really bleak without the trees. And I think there are enough programs in the state of Minnesota and in the county that we could plant trees. I mean, you know, St. Cloud figured out how to plant trees with the soil and water. We have a Benton County soil and water right here in town. So I would like to request of the council that they make more effort to replant the trees they've taken down and perhaps add some. I've talked before about Holdridge Park. It's a big blank, empty lot where the baseball field, whatever it was, field used to be. Not a tree in sight. And I think that it's very short-sighted to not plant these trees. It takes twenty-five, thirty years for a tree to mature. So if, as we did, if you don't do it for thirty years, you're without a tree. So for the people that live now and for the people to come, I don't think it's a really expensive project. And I would just like to make a plea for the trees. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Rosalie. Thank you, and we will take that into consideration and have further conversations at a later time. All right, we have Mr. Lateral. First and last name, address, and take a few minutes and.
Kim Lateral, five eleven Broadway. I got one question and he kind of answered the question. I was wondering about that sewer project or whatever. There's been no final payment on that, right? Okay. Is there a warranty that comes with that project?
I don't know.
No, no. I guess the reason I'm concerned is the other day I was coming out of St. Cloud and I seen Foley Public's work truck sitting over by Truck Headquarters. And I'm wondering if people in Foley are willing to keep spending their tax money to get something that's overrun by a year and a half already.
Sure. I mean, to my, to my knowledge, we're, we're having corrected.
All right, thanks, Mayor. I don't respond to questions unless you give me permission. So the answer to the question related to the warranty is a two-year warranty. The reason that Foley personnel are in the City of St. Cloud is because that's where the sanitary sewer force main discharges into the St. Cloud system. And the City of Foley is responsible for that system from the City of St. Cloud all the way out to the Gulf Ponds.
I guess another question is if the contractor didn't get it running, why aren't we taking care of it? Well, think about it.
Will do. All right, item number eleven, department reports. Chief Katie?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you, first I'll start off with the stat report for the month of March. We had three hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. Now, just some things to point out briefly. Speed enforcement was up. Child ICRs at the school are up from last month. Animal complaints, you can see, have increased. Thirteen of those fourteen are dogs and one are cats. Remember that you have to register your dogs with the City of Foley and they must be on a leash or contained to your yard through Invisalign, gun scene or something of those sorts. So ordinance enforcement is in full swing. It snows, well, it was gone. But reminder to property owners, make sure you are cleaning up your property, getting rid of those abandoned vehicles, garbage, branches, the compost is open. Time to clean up the yard. And then winter parking enforcement is done for the season, so people will be parking back on the streets. Then with our new body cameras and record system, we've been, I've been attending a lot of Zoom meetings with those to get those up and running and hopefully for sure, our new body camera and squad car camera systems should be up in, they're looking at May or so, so we'll have new equipment with that. The squad car is getting the Dodge Durango is over gain equipped over at our installers. And they said, so we should have it hopefully in the next few weeks. So we'll get that back. And then the old one will put on the auction, which was approved in the consent agenda. Myself and Officer Pausha participated in the Foley Community Connect Expo a few weeks ago. It was great turnout. So great to connect with the people there. I also will be posting the part-time police officer position, which was also approved in the consent agenda. Then I'll be in contact with the Personnel Committee to set up the interview date once those get done. Reminder, the bike rodeo is June fourteenth at Lyons Park. It's for ages ten and under, free event for the kids to come out and learn bicycle safety. And I believe that is all I have, unless you have something for me.
How many part-time officers are you looking to fill?
Right now, we had one leave and then one is on his way. He hasn't turned in his notice yet, but he has told me that he is going to most likely be terminating his, or resigning from us. So we're looking at two.
Okay.
Thank you. City Attorney, Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have one update for you regarding the East Central Energy franchise agreement. As you know, we've been discussing these franchise agreements. First was with Excel, and now we are doing it with the other company or franchise that's in our city and that's East Central Energy. It's taking a little bit longer because as part of the state law, we have to make sure the franchise fees that are imposed with East Central Energy are in parity with those with Excel. So we finally got to arrange where Excel has agreed to those levels, and now it's in the final stages of approval with East Central Energy. So that should be coming to you hopefully next month then as well. That, does anyone have any questions for me?
All right, thanks. Call the Corksfire, Mark. Oh, sorry, City Engineer, Jared.
Good evening again. Just wanted to be free tonight, our twenty twenty-five lead service project. We had a meeting today with the PFA, which is our funding source, and then the Department of Health. Kind of go over the last minute or last items to make some adjustments to in our plans, and we'll be seeing those plans in Department of Health end of the week here with the intent that we'll be bringing those plans for approval to the council at the next council meeting and then starting the advertising process for that, that project as well.
How many names do we have on the list?
I can't remember it's a... Initially, it was forty-six. I don't think we are that high anymore. I think now we're in the high thirties. I can get you that information and I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Call the Works, Fire, Mark.
I think the two city engineers handled everything I have, so unless you have something for me, I am good.
All right. Administration, Sarah Brown.
Unlike Mark, I have a lot. So first I wanted to bring to your attention the downtown facade application. It should have been in your packet. The EDA met prior to this meeting and they did motion approval of that application, but contingent on applicable, how do, how do we say it? Help me out. I'm forgotten.
Being in compliance. Being in compliance with state and local ordinances, there is, right now, there is a stop work on the project. And everything was contingent of approving this grant once the stop order's been lifted and it complies with all state and local ordinances, permits, all that.
So we said okay, but we got to work through a few things and we would have to verify that at the City Hall level before that agreement would be executed. That's up for council then, consideration. Because that is only a recommendation. Counsel makes the final decision.
Yep. Thanks, Jeff, for the update.
Did you want to act on that tonight or?
On approving?
Yep. Based on the recommendation?
Contingent on the recommendations.
Yep.
So entertain a motion for approving the recommendation by the EDA?
With the contingencies in place.
With the contingencies. I'll make that motion.
Hold on. Give me a second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Audit field work, that starts next week. We also have a single line audit. I think I've told you that a couple of times, which means we have to do a whole bunch more work papers and things, but we have done one before, so we will get through it. You may have gotten correspondence from the auditors, that's from Schleiner and Wenner. That is normal. You also may get inquiries just asking questions. That's completely normal. But, and also feel free to stop in if you want on Monday or Tuesday. They will be in person here doing field work. I did get some information, well, first of all, any questions on audit? Moving on to the next item, pool credit cards. I did get some information. I provided that in your packet. As I know, there was a couple of questions from council on if we could accept pool credit cards down there. Based on getting our IT to kind of secure that free wifi and get us a secure connection, there's an estimate about up to twenty-two hundred dollars in the packet to get that set up. Fortunately, our current processor would not charge us any additional like service fees per month, just the percentage, which averages about three point six percent. So I guess my question is if you are interested in proceeding with that, we can get some equipment set up. We have to order a computer or we're going to have to swap out a computer or something to find, to plug in that card reader and get that set up. And then the IT work would have to be done too as well, kind of to lock that down. So is that something the council wishes to move forward with?
So it'd be two thousand dollars to get everything set up?
Yep.
But then we also need to get a new computer?
No, that's with the computer. I, I budgeted about a thousand dollars for that. And we might be able to swap out an older one. I, I think that might be a better option. I just wanted to make sure if we do need to purchase a new one, you're aware of that cost.
Okay.
But we're thinking a laptop just based on our credit card swipeper. And I'll work with the pool manager on, you know, how we set that up if that's what we want to do.
So we'll be charging, and that's three point six percent per card?
No. I would not recommend that. The reason being, the pool manager had some concerns with making that calculation and the staff. And also, there's a new state law. You have to notify a person of that charge if you charge anything. I just think that's a lot for, you know, our younger staff to have to deal with. And I also don't want to have an issue where we get into, you know, a problem because of, they forgot or, you know, got busy. If we do it, I would recommend we build it into our costs. And that's what we do with everything else at this point.
And right now, it's, I mean, there's some concessions. Beyond that, it's just paying to get in?
Yeah. And, and realize too, we do online registration for swimming lessons. Those are a lot of credit cards. So we do have some charges already, but that process is cheaper for us to do than having to staff people for a huge registration event, you know. And so we've always done the online registration. So you're really only talking about some additional lessons that happen at the pool, the signups, your admissions and your concessions. So it's not going to be as much because we already have some of that built in. I would probably just suggest maybe we have a ten dollar minimum or something. I don't want them swiping for a dollar here and a dollar there. That just seems kind of silly.
I think that's a good idea. Have a minimum.
But if you're comfortable, I can work with the pool manager and if we have any other questions, we can get back to you, you know, next month on final details.
Are we getting requests for this service?
Yeah, we are. And sometimes what we do with like the larger amounts, if somebody doesn't have cash, they'll call up and our staff here will take a payment over the phone if it's during our office hours. But, you know, sometimes we have people then that have to turn around and go to the ATM because they don't have cash.
I've turned around and didn't come back that day.
Yeah, that's me as well. I don't always carry cash.
I believe it.
Is that something you're interested in moving forward with?
I am.
I am.
I mean, consensus is fine. I can get back to you on the final.
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Anything else on that? Okay, move on to my next item. I do want to have, ask your permission to offer a WSI incentive for pool employees. We did this two years ago when we offered a WSI class and we reimbursed half of their certification fee at the end of the year for, when they taught swimming lessons for us. The estimate I got for the class fee is going to be two hundred and sixty dollars, so it'd be a hundred and thirty reimbursement. Is that something the council's interested in?
We had good success with it last time.
Yes, we did, because we couldn't find enough teachers. So that's one of the ways we were able to. But I only do it as a reimbursement to make sure they actually teach for us. If they don't teach for us, then they, they don't get it.
Sure, I mean, so we, we offset that cost with being able to allow more classes.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, to offer a full schedule, which is good for us and good for swimming in general.
Right. Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just want to give you an update on a couple of things with some Minnesota housing programs. Okay. And then I just want to give you an update on a couple of things with some Minnesota housing program. We are working with DEP on an application for a rehab, housing rehab program. But I'm collaborating with DEP because a number of cities in the county are looking to do this, so we're going to try to work together on our process. So just an update on that. And then they are going to lodge a program on Minnesota housing infrastructure that I will be looking at applying for. But they haven't released, they just kind of released the program guide. They haven't released the full information. They haven't had a session yet. But just wanted to keep you up to date that we're looking at that potential grant program as well. And then the water and sewer rate, we did submit a ton of information to Northland, who is running the modeling for us. Things like capital improvement plans. Mark and I had to work on some street numbers for future street projects, you know, fifteen years out and so forth. We also, like, expect they're going to kind of number crunch and then come back to us with additional information, and then, you know, we'll number crunch again. But the plan is we should have something by midsummer so that we can incorporate that into our budget cycle for next year. So that is in progress and going well. I mean, it seems to be we're getting all the information they need so far. And then the last thing I just want to remind you of is the Benton County admin building tours. I think those start next week. Also, we do have an application for the site plan and conditional use permit that was submitted this week, so we are going to have that on planning commission on April fourteenth. So a whole nother round of project stuff coming likely in May. Sorry, that was a lot, but I just wanted to make sure we got through it all.
So are you done, Sarah? Because I have a question.
Yep.
Tri-County, are they still ignoring you? Or because personally, I can't walk my dog because there are a few piddies that are out loose. And it doesn't matter.
We do have that on the workshop question for discussion.
We got that coming up to workshop.
Yeah, if you're okay with waiting, we can discuss that in workshops further.
Okay.
Any other questions, Sarah?
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
All right. There's nothing on old business. Was there anything we're missing?
Old business?
On our old business. Moving on to new business.
I have new business, and I'd like to ask if Hans would please come up to the podium? Thank you very much.
Hans Zimmerman, two-one-two, Lotus Street.
The main reason I, I want to do this is I was more than a little upset, and I've heard from almost thirty people who are upset that this path went through without any discussion with the city and where it's going. And there is a few other little items. First off, who came up with it?
Well, I'd be happy to chat with you anytime about this, and anybody who has any concerns, I'd have you to do so right now, too. I came up with the idea, and this wasn't through the city. This was something that, well, I spearheaded mainly. And it was something that I did with the help of other coworkers and other people that are involved in the project to celebrate one hundred and twenty-five years of Foley.
But why not talk to Foley?
Well, that's a wonderful...
Citizens, and you've got, you mentioned that some citizens supported, were they asked to donate? There's ads on the side that are fairly expensive. I want to know, was this all done with?
Well, I'm a completely open book, happy to answer any questions. Certainly, nothing malicious happened with this project. This was a way for the Benton County News to celebrate one hundred and twenty-five years in Foley. If there's anything that the city does, which it sounds like is still in the works to celebrate one hundred and twenty-five years, we'll cover it as, as a newspaper, certainly what we'll do. We reached out to different community leaders because I thought that would be wonderful to include in the time capsule. I put a lot of time and thought into this, and I think that you guys would be excited about it and you'd appreciate the thought that went into it. And we also reached out to different businesses. The city was one of them. I know that you guys had expressed some, some thoughts and some concerns. It was kind of a crunched timeline by the time it went to you guys, but we did discuss it at a, at a work session previously. I know it must have been the last meeting. It was last month. So you guys discussed it. I was here. Deb, I think you may have been...
No, I was here.
You were here?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I know.
And there was no discussion. We have a letter on the back of our agenda. And this came out, was our school asked if they wanted to put something in, what's in the time capsule? As a citizen of Foley, we all have a right to at least know.
You definitely do. I'm happy to, to explain anything. And you're completely right. If, if you guys, if anybody in the whole community, or even outside the community, wants to celebrate one hundred and twenty-five years of Foley in any way that they'd like, they're able to do so. And this is the way that, that we chose to do it.
But Hans, don't you under, I'm trying to get through that this is one hundred and twenty-five years of Foley.
Yes.
Of two thousand seven hundred and...
Thirteen.
Thirteen people. And I've had almost thirty of them come up to me when I'm eating lunch and say, who did this? What are they putting in there? It's already sealed. They have no clue what's in the capsule. It was sealed on the twenty-first. It's going to be marched over to Foley Land, which is in Gilminton Township, not Foley. Those are all things that could have been avoided had this come to the council or the city in the start and go through the process. There's a lot of upset people about this.
Well, thank you for letting me know. And there's also a lot of happy people. I've had many people reach out and commend me for the job we did there. I have plenty of business cards, so I can hand you thirty of them or more if you'd like, at your convenience. You know where I work.
They'll be watching.
Yes, well, H-A-N-S dot L, as in Lima, at S-T-A-R hyphen P-U-B dot com. So that's my email. So if anybody has any concerns at all, I certainly suggest that they reach out to me. I'd be happy to converse with them. And, and we did have a little, there was a little discussion at the workshop. I was ready to chat with you guys. But I wasn't asked to stand to the council, I mean, to get up and chat with the council. Similar to Jared, I had the same idea. If you guys were to ask me, I'd, I'd stand up and chat. I had notes already on a document, so, yeah, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. But it's good to remember that if you feel very passionately, and maybe you like my idea about the time capsule, then I, then I encourage you to do something similar. Put it anywhere you'd like, of course.
Hey, I think it was a very good idea, but you don't put multiple time capsules out. You do a city time capsule.
That's a great idea.
And I'm just feeling like you thumbs your nose at the city.
I'm sorry.
And citizens. And yes, it was a good idea, but there's a process when it involves the city.
I appreciate your comments.
So thank you for answering. I do appreciate it. And I'm sure people that have voiced their opinions will appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, they should definitely reach out. And there's been a lot of positive feedback. I haven't heard any negative feedback so far. So for those people that do have negative feedback, reach out to me. That, that, those are my favorite conversations. Because then we get to get on the same page, and rather than talking about it without me being aware of it, then we can find a solution.
That's why I'm here talking about it.
Well, thank you.
And there is no solution.
Well, I'll give you my phone number. We can get creative. I know the celebration on the city's behalf is going to be, to my knowledge, closer to Foley Fun Days. So I hope you guys do something amazing. I'll be there with the camera.
I appreciate. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Hans.
Hans, before you walk away, do you really think Foley Land is a good spot for it? Don't you think a time capsule, capsule should be on city property?
I, I do think Foley Land was a good time, is a good spot for it. I have, I put a lot of thought and time into the placement. I do think that there are arguments, certainly, that it'd be better in other spots.
How about the Veterans Memorial?
I think that's a, that'd be a great suggestion.
But it's not going there now, is it? So what purpose is the suggestion then, when it's already decided?
That, that's a great idea. This was not done by the city, not done by city staff. This is something that a, that a third-party entity is doing, the Benton County News, and that's the decision that we came with. I did reach out to the city, you know, to see if you guys were interested in sponsoring, and that wasn't the case, that's totally fine. It's not a problem at all.
Can I ask who he reached out to in the city?
It, it was me, and I sent, it was in your coffee packet.
It was. I saw it.
There was discussion. There was, it was not very long, but there was some discussion at a workshop.
I do believe we suggested it go on city property, if I recall correctly.
Well, yeah, you guys said that it would make more sense for it to go on city property, but the reason I reached out is to see if you guys are interested in sponsoring. You weren't. We moved on with the project, and once again, I'm happy to support you guys in every way I can and...
When you came to us, it was still in the infant stages.
Well,
No.
Relatively, that's the case, but it was a short time process. So infant stages, I guess you're correct. But I, I put the project together in about a month and a half, and it was important to me to seal the time capsule by the, by Foley's one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of incorporation, which was the twenty-first. But let me know if there's, I'd be happy to chat with you guys forever. I know these people got lives and, and things to get back to, but of course, I'm happy standing up here.
Well, I appreciate that you did come up and you did answer, and we're with respect. Thank you.
Well, yes, you guys can all reach out to me, and I'll answer questions for as long as you'd like.
Thank you, Hans. I think what I got from that is he is correct. It is a third-party idea that came up with what he did. And we are more than capable of doing something on behalf of the city if we felt so compelled to do so. As we are still trying to even figure out what to do to celebrate beyond that. Good. So from there, we move on to item number fourteen. One more new business.
One more thing?
Yep.
I'd just like to send kudos out to Officer Paus. He recently received his certification from the DNR for a youth firearms instructor. And he's helping us at the high school. And also, I'd like to thank the school board for allowing us to teach seventy-five kids youth firearms in a school. It's unheard of these days, and on behalf of all the instructors, we thank you. That's it.
Thanks. Anything else? All right, then we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Council meeting's adjourned. Thank you. We move into our workshop session. We have a few highlighted items here. Top of the list, Tri-County...
Humane Society.
Tri-County Humane Society, Purple Cats.